Thank you. Good evening, folks. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, April 23rd, 2018, around 6:00 PM. My name is Scott Bugby. To my right is Jeff Palumbo. To my left is Jim Leehan. Jim's left is our Town Administrator, Jack Hathaway. And to Jack's left is Suzanne Jacobson. I want to remind folks that this meeting is being audio and videotaped and will be uploaded to NCTV's cable YouTube station. Can we now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jack, could you read us the agenda for tonight, please?
Happy to. Call to meeting for April 23rd at 6:00 PM. First order of business is viewing of the Lions Club 2069 movie. Then we have Bob McEath in to talk about the road program. We have report of the warrants, action items, including the Board of Selectmen reorganization. Please consider acceptance of a Midway Street grant. Discussion items include the budget, the warrant, 2017-18 enrollment projections for Norfolk Public Schools, KP budget update, KP teacher negotiations update, and resident communication review, along with any other unanticipated business that may have come before the board. We do have an executive session at the end of the night.
Great. Thank you. So are you starting the movie, Jack?
That's a great question. I was just... We didn't put it on that PC, did we?
You have the little...
Great plan came to work.
All right. While we're waiting for that...
We can handle warrants?
Yes, as I was going to say. Have they been reviewed?
They have. I moved to approve the warrant signings as of 3/27/218. Warrants for $743,348.18 and a warrant of $417,218,929.86.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Why don't we deal with the reorganization last?
Okay. That's fine with me.
If it's okay?
Yeah. I kind of need Jack for the background on the accepting 29 Midway Street easements.
I have the original for that one to sign when you get there.
I can update you quickly on the KP teachers' negotiation.
Okay.
The contract was finalized. There was some housekeeping issues associated with job descriptions and things of that nature that needed to be finalized. I think those have been done. Not sure. We were able to prevent it from going into mediation and potentially arbitration. So... And it was a very... It was not an antagonistic meeting. Everybody was trying to find the right answers. I think the contract's very fair. I don't want to disclose it because it's... I'm not sure it's signed yet, but very fair. It's a three-year contract. And it's actually less than the Norfolk contract. But there's some reasons for that. They're not apples-and-apples comparisons. But it's a very fair contract. Good news is it will be no... We won't be going into a school year with that hanging over everybody's head, which has happened in the past and that never... No one wins from that. No one. So that's, to me, is really good news.
Good.
And I do want to compliment the teachers' union. I was at that negotiations. I think they handled it very professionally. It was cordial. There were never any harsh or angry words between either parties. Everyone was looking for a amiable solution. So compliments to the union.
Thank you for doing the... Going to meetings too, on all of our behalf.
We may not be... Did you find it? While you're plugging it in, I'll give just... May I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Bill Hawkins, who's president of the Lions, came into our meeting, I'm going to guess, a month ago?
I think it was maybe last month.
I think it was a month ago. And wanted us to know that they were... The Lions were actively going to be supporting organizations that are combating the opioid crisis that we're all dealing with throughout the whole country. Very noble causes. And they had a fundraiser, which was in March, which I did attend. I think it was... I don't know what they raised, but my guess is it was incredibly successful. And they showed a video, a 12-minute video, that they had produced, most of it here in Norfolk, about this issue. And it was an incredible interview... Incredible. And I was hoping that we might show it this evening for folks at home because it is a crisis that we're dealing with. And I applaud the Lions for taking this kind of an issue on. They're terrific. And so that's the reason.
So I'll have my microphone here. I don't know how great... The speakers aren't super, but people at home should be able to hear it. And I think we'll be able to hear it.
Oh, no volume.
We'll rewind it.
Here we go. Nothing like turning them on.
We'll do that. I thought you were starting it over.
You want... He wants chocolate milk and you want regular milk.
All right. Anything else today?
That'll be it.
Your order is 2069.
The hashtag 2069 project started out of a simple, regularly scheduled meeting of the outreach committee. The number of people that we understood had died in the year 2016 in Massachusetts alone was 2,069 people. We decided first to just put that number on a yard sign and let it speak for itself. If it affects you personally and you suffer in the darkness and the stigma, if you feel the isolation, reach out. There are amazing organizations that can support you and raise you love. If you've not spoken about the tragedy you've lost, speak up. Come to know the truth of this addiction. Rise up fearlessly in whatever way you are called to rise up and be a part of that which is necessary. And that which is necessary is change. I thought about this movement. What first came to mind for me? And I'm sorry that I have to actually read this. The word courage came to me.
My name is Jim Derrick and I'm the president of the SAFE Coalition. The Coalition's mission is to target prevention, destigmatization, and to reduce barriers to treatment for substance use disorder. Our resource support line has fielded over 270 phone calls. All of those people have received supportive services and treatment options.
It takes a lot of hands, a lot of hands, and more importantly, a lot of creative thinking.
In its short two-year history, we've seen enormous success. Support groups have sprung up among the eight towns that we represent. This is our nation's number-one health epidemic. Together, we can make a difference.
My name is Jeffrey Roy and I proudly represent the citizens of Franklin and Midway in Massachusetts General Court. I've also been a very active member of the SAFE Coalition, which grew out of Franklin but now is serving eight communities in Norfolk County. As a state government, we have been involved in making legislation, providing budget funds for various programs throughout the community. We also have programs that occur at the federal level. But what we really need are community members like you to come together, to participate in some of these community conversations that are taking place in your area, to offer support to a friend or a neighbor in need, to donate to any of the programs that are supporting recovery efforts in your community. Because it's so important that while we can have these great programs at the state and federal level, we really need your help at the community level, in your town, in your neighborhood, to come together to offer a safe environment for recovery to happen.
As a school resource officer, I am primarily focused on prevention. And what we're really trying to focus on is the root cause of risky behaviors. So things like stress management, conflict resolution, being able to manage issues with their peers. If we reach our kids at a young age, we're going to be setting them up and laying a great foundation for them to be able to navigate peer pressure, the stressors that are inevitably going to come in life, and many other factors. If you're a person who is affected by this epidemic, or you have a loved one that's affected by the epidemic, there are a number of resources out there. I am so proud to be a part of the SAFE Coalition, where we're able to get help and resources to members of our community and beyond. There are also a number of resources within your local police department, at your schools. We're really focused on prevention, education, and treatment today.
My name is Robin Hamlin and my son's name is Brian. Brian lives in heaven. He was addicted to pain meds. He became addicted when he was in college. Brian was just this amazing little boy with a wonderful family and a brother and a sister who adored him.
I don't know if you can do anything to those kids like that.
Got injured playing football. That was as a freshman. And we brought him into Children's Hospital in Boston. And there he had surgery and they sent him home on a Vicodin pain pump. I remember saying to the doctors, "That's safe." And he said, "Oh, my goodness, yes, he's fine. Just he'll recoup and he'll get back to college and life will go on as it was." And so he did. He got home. He was all good. He started playing football again. And five years later, he graduated with his degree. What a moment. What we didn't know was when we did bring Brian in for his surgery, he became addicted. And when he graduated and we had him home, something was going wrong. He got laid off. We got phone calls coming in from debt collectors. He was getting in mind of car accidents. Things weren't right. But we didn't quite know what it was. His looks were changing. He wasn't taking care of himself. I remember searching his room and there I found the bottle of OxyContin. As a parent, we never can imagine that that day would ever happen to our child. We just don't. We could never plan for this and it brings you to your knees. I remember finding that bottle and just thinking, "Dear God, how did this happen?" Because we thought we did everything right. Brian's journey with addiction started that day when he was sitting in the bedroom with his Vicodin pain pump, squeezing it. His body really liked it and he couldn't stop. The one thing that I am very grateful for is that Brian reached out and we reached out as a family to get help. We had to be honest, honest about this disease that so many people don't want to be honest about because they're ashamed, or they're embarrassed, or they think they've done something wrong. The day when we got a phone call about Brian was a day that I never could have been prepared for. When he's accusing, "Please do not sleep," because that's what parents do. You don't sleep, you don't eat, you don't function because you live in fear 24 hours a day that you're going to get a phone call. You need help. Reach out. There are people who care. There's organizations. There is groups. I run a support group myself called Unconditional Love for families and the addicts that come in and will share their story. There's help, but you have to reach out and get it. Never feel like you are alone. Because to me, that's the horrific part of this, is people feel isolated. Don't be. Don't isolate yourself. When you have people who care and love about this disease, miracles truly happen.
Hi, my name's Sean Merrill and I just reached four years clean. The reason why I'm sharing my story is so that people know that there's hope, that you can recover. I struggled with addiction for a long, long time and didn't think that I could recover from addiction. I went down some deep, dark roads. I went to eight different programs and all the while thinking that I could control my addiction, my drinking, my drugging, but I couldn't. And I ended up losing many, many things. Came into the program of Teen Challenge in 2014 and my life has been completely transformed. I've been able to make amends with the people that I've hurt, been able to turn my life around and be a productive member of society where I can now help other people that are struggling with addiction. Everything changed for me and that was the night that I received a phone call that my younger brother, who I had used drugs with for a long time, passed away from an overdose. I've committed my life to fighting this epidemic so that as many families don't have to be a number. They don't have to be 2,069, a number or a statistic. This is going to be a fight that's going to be hard and I can't do it on my own. We need as much support as we possibly can get to help every single family, not only that's lost a child, but so that families in the future don't lose children, don't lose their brothers or sisters, or sons, daughters, or mothers or fathers. It's going to take a whole community effort to fight this epidemic. We need you. We need you to get involved. We need you to fight. We need you to volunteer, to donate, to stop the stigma, to talk about this issue, to call your state representatives, to get involved and fight. We can't do this on our own. We need you.
All of the funds that were raised that evening were donated to the organizations that you saw listed in that video. Tremendous effort by the Lions.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, with that, now we turn to even a more uplifting subject, roads. Bob, do you want to join us up here? You've got a crowd, so be prepared.
Jeff, how you doing?
Good.
Good.
Always have a handout.
Always has a handout. That arrive with you guys? Can I just pass these around?
If you have enough for... We could share the crowd too, because I know they're interested in roads.
This here is a water update. And if you can...
You look this check?
We have enough for...
Jack needs one, too.
I'm coming over that way.
Oh, okay.
You can keep yours. You need one too for the...
Yes, please. It's the second page.
Do I give you the second page?
Yeah.
You got the second page. I was going to try to share them too. I'll give you mine.
You're doing. I know I'm here to talk about roads, but the first thing I gave you just to pass around was just to update you on the water. We're in search of new source and we have a well site, as you all know, on Holbrook Street. So we're at the point right now where we're towards the end of our permitting and we're just waiting on comments, I believe, from the DEP. The preliminary thought is that they're in favor of what we're doing. We had some hurdles with comments from the Charles River watershed, the town of Millisad comments, the fisheries and wildlife, and there was like an Indian heritage concern where there may have been some historical artifacts or something like that and they want to do some kind of search to see if there's any disturbance of what could possibly be lay there. So the comments that we got everywhere were kind of like... I wouldn't say they're negative, but they're kind of not favorable. I don't think that you would expect that they would be, you know, come and dig a hole and get water. They want to conserve as much water for the Charles River as possible. But the DEP has been right at our side. They know our needs and they took all the letters in under consideration. And that's pretty much just formality. But the DEP is in favor of what we're doing. They understand our needs and so forth. And as you know, the test results from the well site are that it's a fairly shallow well. It's not... It's more seasonable, favorable for us because it is shallow. It, you know, it was... The drawdown is like from 12 feet down to 27 feet where our other wells are down, you know, 70 feet. And some wells around Massachusetts could be down as deep as 1,000 feet. So it's a pretty shallow well and clean water. And so right now, just to, you know, bring you fast forward that, you know, we're just waiting to hear back from the DEP. And we have cost estimates from our consultant environmental partners. And I think we're going to go forward at town meeting to ask for those funds. And then, of course, I think the first thing we might want to do is purchase the land. So we had an article to buy the land and we had an article approved to fund the land and that was all contingent on permitting and safe water and so forth. And it's... I think it's time to do that. So that's pretty it. Pretty much it with water. I think it's good news. So with all the growth in town, it's needed.
Any idea on the timetable as far as the state approval?
Almost like any day. I would think that... I can't remember our conversation with Ryan, whether it was this summer, Jack, or was it in 2009 that we were going to put bid specs together and go out for construction?
Oh, the summer, yeah.
Yeah, over the summer. So that's the timeframe.
Yeah, we don't know exactly when the DEP will give us their final okay, but it should, as Bob said, it should be any day now.
So in all, good news. Remember if we had even 16 wells to give us all the water we want? We're permitted for a certain amount. So it's kind of... It's good supplemental for us to allow our other wells to rest, let them recharge, and optimize the three wells against one another is just good. So what it does, just as important is giving us more, you know, additional water when needed. It'll save the life of the other two for a longer period. But this doesn't mean we should stop looking for water because three wells is, you know, in a growing town is minimum. Some towns, like I think Franklin's got 14 wells, for instance.
The change from the sodium hydroxide to the potassium hydroxide on the existing wells, is that so? It's consistent with what is going to be used in the new well? Is that... That kind of just caught my attention, the chemical conversion.
No, I don't... It's... Actually, I don't know the benefit of that. I mean, I was told. I just... I can't remember.
Yeah. We can have you talk to Ryan. I mean, I know you're...
Yeah.
I know that's your area of expertise and certainly not mine, but we can have Ryan explain that. I'm sure there's a good reason for it. That's...
We don't have too much additive in our water, you know? Just the very minimum. We have gravel-packed wells and it's very clean. So we had some mandatory minimum doses of chlorine. And anything else, we have a little food agent that really just lines the pipe and it doesn't do much more. We had a UV system that we eliminated. So pretty much we have clean water in town. We're flushing twice a year. That's where, if you see dirt in the water or something, what you're looking at is minerals, which is, you know, another word for maybe some gravel that, you know, in some way got in there and stuff and, you know, water holes and the laterals from the main to the hydrant and, you know, it does get caught up. So you release that and you do a hydraulic flush around town to force the water out. And you probably saw the signs around that we're in the process of doing that right now, twice a year.
And our leakage is down below 8% now, isn't it?
Right. It's been, you know, around 5%.
Compared to, was it an all-time high, 20-some odd?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three. I guess I was wishful thinking.
Yeah.
Well, good work. I mean, a lot of coordination to get to this point, so hopefully we'll get some good news here from the DEP. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Next one up is roads. If I can show you what I'm... If I can show you guys this thing here. It's the printout on landscape. That just shows you what we have for open projects. And, you know, our funding sources are, you know, pretty much our articles that have been approved and our chapter 90s. So to the left, you can see the project description. You may be familiar with some of them, the amount of money that we got approved, the what we've spent to date, the balance, and just a couple of comments on what we're doing going forward with those. What we have this year is just a... We just got approved, you may know or you may not, is chapter 90 funds got approved at $391,000, something like that. We have unaccounted-for chapter 90 monies to the tune of about $109,000. Don't hold me to that, but it's right around there. So chapter 90, put all together, uncommitted, would be about $400,000 of spending. Some of the projects that you see that are open are for some reason, and when they get complete, usually some money goes back to chapter 90, more often than we come back and ask for money. But that's what's open. And if you got any questions on that, I'd be glad to ask them for you because the next page is what we are looking at going into the construction season.
Questions on the open projects, anyone?
I would request that I could speak up a repair strategy sheet.
Yep. Need the microphone too, in your name. Thank you. Again, for the folks at home, because we can hear you fine. No, no, it's okay. It's frustrating for people who watch at home to not be able to hear what people say.
So the repair strategy sheet is just an over, you know, wish list. There's no way we could afford... The prices I put kind of to the right. So the way I formatted this, if you see the street name, they're somewhat in what I consider to be in worst condition, I'm sure. Everybody can find a street that maybe not be on this list, but these are the streets that are, you know, sometimes most heavily traveled. And if you... Just to understand that you can see the street, the two and the frums, you know, the length of the street, minimum information on it, but the price to the right is in dark is... Maybe I'll just keep going with this, but if you look at the total cost column...
So is the dark column, is that what you're proposing? And then the far right is...
Right. Exactly, Jack. If you look at this, like Cleveland Street, Cleveland Street, the total of Cleveland Street should really be paved. And it's a total of 7,000 feet from Rockwood Road to Seekonk Street. And if you look to the far right, the cost of that is about $312,000, given the repair strategy that I have planned for it. But that would be close to all we could do this year. So we look at the street and I put a little bit... I put something underneath there, another Cleveland Street, and I'm recommending Cleveland Street, Rockwood to Holbrook. It's in the worst condition. And there's still a construction going on for that 40B project, so I kind of like let them ruin the road while they're doing it. We can patch that road together for as long as we have to, but as soon as that project's done, that road would be pretty much expired and we'd want to pave the rest of it. But for right now, I'm thinking Rockwood Road to Holbrook Street is affordable and in worst shape. So, Jack, to your question, I put the street down here twice and then I put a realistic... Everything on the total cost column that's in the dark and bold is possibly affordable, you know, this year if we get to all of it.
Excuse me, Bob, just a question. When we do a partial road, let's just say, for the sake of argument, like Cleveland, and there's an area that I know is closer to fruit that was particularly bad. You recall you had the barrels, you know, this winter around it. You know, might we do a section like that?
Right.
That's unusual? That's unusual, let's say, for the balance of the road, so it's not just the section that's being done in a more comprehensive way. There's some spot repair to perhaps some of the balance of the roadway. I just, as we go through the projects, I just want to know how to think about this in terms of the priority, that's all.
That's, you, you probably said what I was going to get around to anyways. Some of these streets that we just can't afford to do, curb to curb, the whole length is a section patch street. So, we'll go out there, we'll mark out the, and we'll just take the cancer out of that street, as I say, and then we'll bind to that flush and keep that road in good operating condition with the hopes that we can, you know, overlay it and save that work underneath. That's going to be probably one of our biggest efforts this year because this year, I don't know, it wasn't all that cold, we did have a lot of moisture, the, you know, we thought the winter was over in February and March killed us. Potholes came alive like I haven't seen them in a long time.
Really?
Town by town. I'm, you know, I'm talking to other directors and everybody's saying the same thing. But there's some small sections of street that are, you know, pretty, pretty close to gravel.
So, you don't have, so that's not really on this as part of like, you know, the strategy, if you will, you know, you've identified those.
Yeah, so it's like, so again, the street name, what's in bold there, if the print came out good for you. I think if you look at those streets and draw your eye over to the total cost, you add those all up, it's $422,000 worth of construction that may possibly be affordable. You know, I brought something larger here with my breakdown and calculations. Some of them we're going to have, you know, some of them I've put, you know, a sidewalk on or something like that too, so.
So, Bob, which streets do you feel fit that description where it's going to be, let's say, a partial reconstruction and there's going to be sections that aren't reconstructed, but there will be spot repairs, let's say?
Boardman Street intersection, yeah. This is, you know, this should, you know, I could sit here and talk all day about these particular streets and stuff. The Boardman Street section, it's falling apart. As you come down Route 115 and you take a left on Boardman or a right on Boardman to go to the school, that whole intersection is underwater, right? You know, right now, you just drive by it, but any kind of rain, the water's not making it to the catch basin. It's caused, you know, the street to come apart and so there's a great deal of section patch there. So, what I'm going to do is I'll have a handful of streets like that, like for instance, Main Street. Main Street's coming apart from City Mills Bridge up to Park Street. It's not all of Main Street, but so as while we're doing that, I'm thinking that we need to do Hanover. Hanover hasn't gotten touched since, you know, for a long time. It's nothing but a big crack sale street. But then that ties in Myrtle Street, which from Main Street to just pass Hanover, that street's just, it's not repairable. It's, it won't live up to a section patch. If I cut a little section here, just beyond that, another three feet, there's another bad part. So, it's frustrating, but that would be nice to tie all that in, Main Street, Hanover and Myrtle. And you see the stats for that. Other streets, um...
Bob, can I just go back to that Boardman intersection? Your predecessor, this one's not on you, redid that whole intersection.
Yeah.
Why is it not draining?
I don't know. The, you know, there's a catch basin and everything's supposed to be above that, flow to the catch basin, but the catch basin's the driest part of the street. So, it kind of hangs back and I don't know if it had anything to do with that paving. I don't think there was an elevation problem with that paving, that was Bevlocka. I think the asphalt fell apart, so we had them reclamation, mill it over and repave it. So, you know, sometimes, you know, you get a look at the drainage system. If there's any infiltration into the drainage, you could take the fines or the road just, you know, sags a little bit and stuff like that and just, you know, it just fell apart there, mostly on the Boardman side that's, you know, on the DPW side of Rockwood Road. The other side is just, what I want to do to that intersection, it's all curbed, and if you look down a little bit at the bottom of this, we're proposing a traffic signal there. So, I kind of want to do that whole intersection and the traffic signal there, the prices on the right is, you know, it's, you know, it's like a 10-foot in the ground foundation down to 12 feet and it's a, it's like a sonnet tube, it's round, steel, they put concrete in the back, fill it, but, you know, it's, it's a maston that goes up and it hangs over to the center of the street, not just that up and down traffic signal that you might see on the side of a road. You know, it's not a stop signal, it's not red, yellow and green. It's blinking red and blinking yellow.
Like the one on Marshall?
That's a pretty much stand-up vertical one.
That concept.
Concept, but...
So, blinking yellow on 115 and blinking red on Boardman, I think, right?
Right. But this is going to hang right over, so traffic can come down, it's not going to have to wait to go around the corner because you need to, you know, really see the sidewalk before you see this light. But this one here will, you know, well, the signals will be dead center, over the center of the road. You know, it holds up to wind and rain and, you know, storm conditions, so it's, it's an expense. So, those, so I've been pricing that and I've got, you know, Ocean State signals to give us the supply. Bell Traffic is famous for the installation and right here on our own town, we have island lighting. And the quotes that I got back, I think island lighting is a little bit less than Bell. So, there's three different places there. So, the end of that story is I think it's nice that we have a contractor right in town. He can stock pots and stuff like that and repair it as well, but there's three different locations here. And I put these here, not that we could afford to do it this year, it's actually, it'll bring us over budget, but we've been talking to Ingrid, the school superintendent, she's really concerned about that intersection. So, I think a favorable one would be Boardman at, at Rockwood.
So, what is that, you know, obviously blinking yellow, blinking red, what, how does that, I mean, I know it's a dumb question, how does it help? I mean, people come up and see the blinking red, they're supposed to stop anyways, I mean, it's a, you know...
It's, you've come out of that intersection.
Yeah.
And if you come out from the school and you want to take a left, I think that's the most threatening.
Right.
Because you look, there's a corner of land with a lot of trees, we took down some of the trees. The guy's got that property for sale, I think he sold it. You know, would have been a nice little one for us to purchase a little of that so we can get better line of sight because it's frightening coming out of there and taking a left and that's probably the worst-case scenario. There's traffic reports, you know, I've talked to the police about it, it's just what it is, it's a tough intersection. It's, kids are involved, there's crossing there, there's...
So, it's more of a safety, I mean, it's like you said, it's not red, yellow and green where, you know, because like you said, they could use certain times where it's just people, the buses are just trying to get out and it's a nightmare, you know, at the same time of day.
Yeah. When you get the, you know, the full stop and the yellow and the green to go and stuff, you get your full panels and stuff in the ground and then you're talking to, you know, $200,000 and I don't know if we really need that.
I wonder if there's technology where there's a transponder in the bus that will make it into a red light for the buses to cross safely when a bus approaches.
I don't think so on this, Jeff. I think you need a full traffic stop signal for that. And then the ambulance can activate it, I forget what they're called, optocom or something like that. And they can blast right through it, shut everybody off.
Yeah, I mean, the town's growing up, you know, it continues to grow and, you know, if this is moving in the right direction, I guess it's just a matter of time down the road, probably these will be red lights, you know.
Yeah. I mean, you talk it over and you think that maybe this isn't the right way to go and you want to go with a full set of lights, then, you know, I don't want to put this up and have you change your mind three years from now.
Well, structurally though, it'll support, I mean, we do...
I don't know if it's reusable.
Yeah, I mean, we should at least look at that to make sure that when the day comes, it'd be nice if we had the infrastructure that would support a full...
I don't know enough about it, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Doesn't the full stoplight require like state approval, requires state approval? You know, it has to have certain traffic flow and volume and stuff like that too?
I understand, yeah, you'd have to have the warrants.
Yeah. Even this here, we need to let them know that we're doing it, the state, but there's just more involved with that other one. So, the foundation of the ground for this maston would be strong enough, but I don't know if it's in the right location or not, I think it would, I'll ask that.
Well, one, you know, one thing, and I don't, I'm not sure I've heard back about the, whether or not we've been approved yet or not, but Rich was trying, Rich McCarthy was trying to get a street smart, smart street grant?
Complete street, yeah.
What's that?
It's called complete street.
Ah, complete street, thank you, I knew I didn't have it right. Complete street grant to look at the safety of some of our intersections and is he, I know he was, he was going to look at that one as well.
And Seekonk.
Yeah, the one by the cemetery, the one at the other end by the Autobahn Everett Street and 115, so.
The complete street, I think their claim to fame is the bike in the street with the sidewalk and...
Yeah, but making intersections safe as well. So, you know, we, I'll talk to Rich and we'll make sure that we loop in his, because, you know, I think you guys bring up a good point, whether or not we want to go to yellow, red or directly to something more serious or at least be prepared to go to something more serious if it, you know, we can go by step by step, but we'll, I'll circle back with Rich and we can talk about that before we go spending money on that project, but...
In terms of any state funding for those types of projects, I mean, what's the appetite as far as, you know, given that it's public safety related stuff? I mean, is there grants that we should be applying for maybe or...
I think after we do the complete streets analysis, you know, then we can, you need, you can go and, you know, go get another Mass Works grant, it's the old P Wed grant and, you know, we can, we can look at that, but we can have the engineering done.
You have to have the data, yeah.
Yeah.
Bob, I thought the Grove Street Union to Trailside is also going to be tied into a water line.
It is.
So, this is, is going to be a shared cost or is that represent the chapter 90 share?
I did, well, I did this here, this is pretty conservative, so I threw all the money into this figure here, but it, you know, it depends on how much we want water to pay for. Sometimes water can do a full curb-to-curb overlay, but I think water's got enough on its own shoulders right now. It'll pay for it, the water main to go in there, it'll be great for looping the system in clean water, it'll hook a few more people up and maybe even add additional pressure for some people. So, we, you know, I'm hoping that we don't run into ledge there, that's what held us up that before and a contractor to do it. Shortly, there'll be a contract in front of you for signing. We went out to bid on equipment rental and so we have a local contractor that I intend to use that contract for, to do the water main installation on Grove Street. That's done. If we can get it done anywhere's near, you know, the middle, early or middle of the summer and it settles out enough, then we'll...
Will that block the street or will it just be the half of the street?
Excuse me?
Will the street still be open during that?
Yeah. You know, sometimes it won't be, but at night, every night before we go home, it'll be two-way traffic and we'll have traffic control there for...
With the steel plates over it, something.
Yeah. So, usually what happens is if, say it was just smooth digging, probably three days of inconvenience. We're just going to dig it and put it in because it's not that long, I forget how many feet. But, but if there's ledge, ledge, then, you know, we need to chip at it and then, you know, we may get $10,000 into this project and just forget about it. Just let's get out of here because it's going to kill us, you know? We tried, but, yeah.
For me to check through.
The 106,000, 184?
Balance on the open projects.
I know you've said a couple of them are going to be transferred to chapter 90. I mean, you're always very good about, your estimates are always very close on these repairs, I saw, they have been for years. I mean, these are the major roads you want to do. You still have funds available for basic repairs. Well, there are, I mean...
In the DPW budget.
There are a lot of streets that we're not going to be able to pay the attention to that we'd like to, but we still have, we don't want to lose a Volkswagen in a hole.
Right.
So, you still have funds available to do that.
We have our operating budget, which, you know...
Right. How much do you have in there?
Well, it's, I think we, $50,000 I think is the appropriation if it gets approved, which that's what it was for the last two years and we used every cent of it, you know? But then we have separate line items for like line painting and catch basin cleaning and, you know, some other things too, but, but it wasn't up until three years ago, it was 25,000 a year, it was kind of like, you know, don't ask, disappeared.
Any other questions? Yes, sir. Can you identify, you know, get the mic, please, and just identify yourself, name and address.
Is the microphone on now?
Yep.
Okay. My name's Tim Barley from River Road. Hi, Bob.
Oh, I wish you didn't come.
I'm sorry.
River Road's not on here and that's...
Well, I have to confess, I learned of this meeting tonight and when you passed out these sheets, horrified looking at these, as a businessman, I see there's over $500,000 worth of improvements that you would like to make. That's a lot of coin, traffic lights, balance and open projects and over $422,000 worth of road repairs. And unfortunately, River Road is not on this list. And I understand that we don't have a limited, we don't have a bottomless well for money. So, my request tonight is a request and I want to be as, again, I would address it a little bit more appropriately if I know there was a meeting tonight. I, first thing I'd like to do, if I may, is approach the board and just show a couple pictures that I took tonight on the way here. If I may, if that's appropriate, if it's not, just tell me. And I'm sure Bob's aware of this. This is a section of River Road that it's, you can see the safety cone, I'm not sure who put that there, I don't know who put that...
Yeah, just my guys, yeah.
And it's getting worse by the day. It's a section by 40 River Road that...
I see that.
It's, the holes are expanding daily, they're getting wider and deeper. And my wife just blew out a tire recently. So, it's, to me, in my uninformed opinion, but my personal opinion, it's becoming a major safety hazard because now you see people swerve to avoid these ditches, they're not potholes, they're ditches. And you got people running on the street, jogging, walking dogs, riding bicycles and there's a lot of curves on River Road too. So, if you're not paying attention, you're going to create an issue, whether it's an accident or somebody getting hurt. But the potholes themselves, every time it rains, it rains, I cringe, you can take a look at this. I would have taken more pictures if I had known about the meeting, I would have printed them out for you and I can still do that if you need to, but I don't think it's necessary. I think you've been on the road. Where I'm concerned with is the safety of people, the safety of vehicles, like I said, tires are getting blown out now. And the repairs that I've seen over the years that I've lived there, it always patches, okay, you know, but now we're patching, patching, we're patching patches. And every time I see them, they do that, I know, I can almost predict to the day when those asphalt patches will just come apart, will disintegrate. So, my request is that you consider the River Road, the really bad area, if there isn't money available, I understand, then just, but don't patch it because it's not going to, it's a waste of money to do that because they just, like I said, fall apart. But it is becoming an issue with the width of the potholes, as you can see in my very poorly amateur pictures here, the width, the depth, the size, the quantity of potholes is growing daily. I understand, you said it, you know, very elegantly earlier, that horrible spring and these potholes materialize all over the place. So, I was going to come with a little bit stronger attitude, but I see their budgets here, so I understand. As a businessman, I understand that there's limited funds, but in my opinion, and I'm not a construction guy, but in my opinion, it's really becoming a safety issue. There's a small, the whole road is bad, but this one particular area with the traffic cone that somebody put up, I don't know who, that particular area is really, really bad, you can't drive through it. Well, you drive through it at your own risk. And again, with the social activity on River Road, the joggers, the bicycles, there's multiple new houses now, right down the street from me where the airport was, now you have beautiful homes built in there and there's multiple cars per home. So, the traffic I've noticed increased significantly in the past couple of years and they're still constructing. I think there's three new homes that people haven't moved in yet, they're for sale. So, the road traffic is continually to build and it is off of one of the bad streets you've listed, it's off of Myrtle. So, it's something that, you know, it should be looked at. Again, I understand limitations and how much you can stretch a dollar, but at this point, you know, you've got to look at safety and you've got to look at, you know, whatever can be done to at least, you know, the patching process is not permanent. When it rains, you know, you drive through that patch and it just disintegrates. I've picked up chunks of asphalt in front of my house and I just throw them out, but, you know, it's, it's an issue that's not going to get any better and unfortunately, it's going to get worse by the day. And I don't have an answer for you based on what, what your presentation was, Bob. I don't have any answers, but other than to please look at it.
I don't, I don't expect that you gentlemen would remember this, but River Road... I don't, I don't expect that you gentlemen would remember this, but River Road was in great shape compared to Priscilla. Four or five years ago, do you remember? Priscilla, it was like real bad. It was the same story, more densely populated. So towards the middle of the summer, what we did was, you know, again, sometimes you just got to break the rules of what's, you know, I call it the engineer's handbook, but in paving. If we go out and do the same application perhaps that we did on Priscilla, it will buy some time. But, you know, eight years from now, I can't guarantee it unless you use the right method of doing it. River Road's one of those easy roads to forget. It's kind of like if you look at Kingsbury. Kingsbury's a shame. It's, you know, and it goes like this. You know, there's a handful of roads that it's, because the people that live in the street are great and they don't complain, you don't hear from them. And there's not a lot of traffic, so you try to spend your dollars where there's more visibility and high traffic. But you're right, you know, I, I got no excuse. If it needs to be done, I can put an application to it and it'll be good.
So better than, you know, for non-engineers, so better than the pothole, you know, better than this hot tar that you put in the big potholes, I mean.
Yeah, well, you know, the, when we go out and it's, you know, 32 degrees and we're putting hot mix in the hole.
Sure.
You don't expect it to stay. But when it's cut and you have, you know, side edges on it and you have the, when you put the asphalt in and have something to compact against, sidewalls and you cut it square and stuff, you put a section patch and then you overlay the whole thing. It kind of like, you know, it protects it. There's, it's, again, it's money, you know, but it's the cheapest way to do it.
A question. Do you, I know you look at traffic flow. And I know the roads, you know, all these roads, every one of them is a highly traveled road. But I'm just wondering whether we should weigh, let's take Hanover for example.
Yep.
Hanover's a cut through to go to Franklin.
Yep.
I'm sure it's heavily traveled, no question. But I don't know how many homes are on that street, but it can't be more than a half a dozen.
Right.
So in terms of residents utilizing that road, it's a small number. And I'm not demeaning a small number, that's not my point. But, and I'm sure it's more heavily traveled than River Road. Because everyone that comes down Myrtle or anywhere in that direction, you know, there's a hockey rink down there. It's a heavily traveled road coming, cutting down at Franklin. But we don't have a lot of residents that are serviced by that in terms of living there, where we do on River Road. Where does that fit in the, and I know it's a tough one, so I'm putting you on the spot. But how do you weigh the traffic flow versus the number of residents that it impacts?
I think I explained that almost. These people are great that live on the street and they don't complain. So we keep the street patched together. And that's all it is. It's skeletal. But.
I mean, I know Cleveland's a disaster. Yeah, I mean, Cleveland's a horrible, Grove, you'd lose a car. I mean, I, I know that, but.
Used to be this crazy lady from Village area, Village Street that used to call me all the time.
Hope she's still not there watching TV.
I was going to say. Not watching TV.
She's not watching TV at all. She's sitting right here.
We haven't been able to get down there.
Oh, oh, I forgot about that. Well, you moved to Needham, I got screwed up.
Yeah, not much better.
Needham Street's in tough shape. But there's a whole, you know what I did? I was being polite giving you this because this could be three times longer. But that's exactly what, you know, what's good about this is we look at it, we weigh it, we debate it and see where you want to spend the money. And then there's, you know.
Well, I've got your roll sheet that you gave, you know, the big recap that you did.
When, when did you, that's, I don't know when you got that.
Last year.
Okay.
I think it's last year. There isn't a date on it.
Well, I got another, well, all right.
But I mean, a lot of the same roads are here. I mean, we, well, that would be logical that we'd have the same roads that we had two years ago. But I mean, the needs are the same. You know, unfortunately, the price goes up every year, we don't work on it. That's the bad news. I mean, I don't, I don't know how to solve it because you've, you've got basically a half a million dollars to work with. But I guess I would, my own thoughts is I would prioritize residents' needs over what I would call sort of community cut-throughs. I mean, I know, I go down Diamond all the time. Diamond's a mess. No question about it. It's an absolute mess. But there are like three houses on Diamond. And it's a cut-through.
It is.
Use it almost every day. But I wouldn't prioritize, and you haven't, I wouldn't prioritize Diamond over some, you know, street that's got 50 people living on it. I don't know, I don't know how to resolve it, but I do, I do think the point being that residence is something somehow we ought to get into equity.
That's what I needed to hear. I mean, that's, now we can.
That's just my opinion. I mean, you guys, you guys jump in.
But I feel, you know, we have Ralph here and Tim here too. It's like if every resident comes, like, because they came to meet, do they get their road fixed? And I think you're right, Bob, it's, how's it brought to attention? But I certainly favor the resident approach versus, you know, almost like convenience of a cut-through. Because if it's a cut-through and you don't like the, like, obviously Lake Street could be a cut-through if it wasn't a pothole, you know, if it wasn't the worst road in town, right? You could cut through. But if you don't like it, don't cut through if, you know, if we can't fix the roads.
Midway Branch, I mean, I know that's, we all go down that road at least twice a week. But it's not as bad as River. I've been down River. It's not as bad as River Road is.
Again, just, there's a small section. The whole road needs attention and I know there's not enough money to do that. And when you turn onto River Road, there's a half a mile of S-turns before you get to a house. So I understand that there's not a priority there. You can patch some of the deep holes, fantastic. But once you get at the first house at River Road, it's really the second house. I think it's 40, I believe. There's a small stretch there that's literally undrivable. The potholes, the picture I took was, you know, I took it from my car and there was a guy behind me tonight. But there's a traffic cone there for a reason, it's like a safety warning. It's really bad. And again, so the safety issue is why I came tonight, both, you know, for people and for vehicles. And then the population density has increased significantly and is continuing to increase. You guys know better than I do, all the new homes that are in the airport area.
People used to airport Viking and stuff like that, coming home.
I've lived there and I see, I see, you know, traffic, a big increase in traffic.
Yeah, that's true.
And the more you go over those potholes, you drive over them, the bigger they get. So that's why I'm here.
Is there, is it possible to, you know, this could be, you can say that's a stupid question and it won't hurt my feelings. Is it possible to think through this a little differently? And, and look at situations where, and I know over time it costs more money. No question about that. I got that. But this was such a tough winter. You even started off by saying it's the worst you've seen, you know, in terms of the damages to the roads. Would we be better at rethinking this to the point where we do partial components of this, just in the critical spots? And get more done and buy more time? Would that have any logic to it?
It's, it's a thought. It's, our contract with PJ Keating is designed to, you know, go down a street and do a mile a street. You know, that's why they, we can buy it at $68 a ton in place. If I go and pick it up with our trucks, it's $68. And then I have to have, pay a contractor to put it down. But it is, and it's, and then, what I try to do each year is I try to figure out four or five streets and I tell the contractor, I'll pay for the, to leave the trailer and the, to move the machines because they had to climb the paver up and the rolls up on the machines. And we'll do this section of the street, you know, 300 feet here, 300 feet here. And in two days, knock off like 10 of these things. And, but, you know, I get them to agree to do it and I do it every, every year. We've, so, there's one thing I wanted to mention to you. We haven't tried. A while back, Urban Priest was the Director of Public Works over in Rentham. And I don't know how we figured this thing out, but I didn't think he knew anything about paving. But there's this hot in, hot in place method. Jack, I don't know if you're familiar with it, where they come and they heat up the street, they throw it in the back, they throw a little bit more oil and gravel in, and then they lay the same street back out behind it. And it's.
Say that again?
It goes and it kind of like mills the street.
Yeah.
And then it makes the asphalt as it's going, two miles an hour.
Mm-hmm.
And then it.
Regrinds it and then repaves it?
Yeah, it's called hot in place asphalt. And I don't know, it's like $2 a square yard or something like that. The, why I haven't considered it before is that it's a big production. It's high in the air. If you've got trees, it's, in, in every street, the trees will appear to be dead, but they come back to life. I mean, you, we'll field phone calls forever until it comes back to life, but the trees do.
Because it's scraping off all the leaves and knocking off.
No, because it's like a fire.
Oh, the heat.
And.
So it's the heat that's killing the trees or appears to be killing the trees?
Yeah, and it just singes the leaves. It's like your grass. You burn your grass, it comes back better.
Like salt water.
So anyways, that's a, that's a method that might be excellent for that. I was thinking that for, so in other words, there's a couple of streets. I don't know, what's it Creek Street? If you go down 140, you take a left to go down to Lake Pearl? I think that was all done with that method about four years ago and it's holding up good. Right on, you know where they, in Norfolk, where they fly the airplanes and it goes down behind the state school? That street has held up good. And that was four years ago. What you're supposed to do is that, and then you put like a stone chip on top of it. But a lot of people don't, that's when it becomes, you know, why not just pave it? Because if you take the hot in place stone chip, it adds up to, might as well just overlay it.
I have seen this. They did that, they did that down in West Dennis.
Cape would be an excellent place for it. But when you look at the streets that can do it, you can't do it in neighborhood streets or anything like that. You might do it with Myrtle Street. River Road would be a great one. So I'll look into that.
It would have saved us money? Could we do more with it that way?
Yeah. You know, a lot of times I've come to you and you've given me money for streets and I've gone ahead and I've paid the streets with warning that, you know, this is just a protective layer. We've got to get back to them and overlay these streets. Well, I got a half a dozen of them out there that, you know, have never been finished. They're holding up just because we don't have that kind of traffic. But, you know, like Noon Hill. Noon Hill, it'd be, you know, $600,000 to overlay that, but it needs to be overlaid. Butch, when he was here, had it reclaimed it, had it binded, but never put the top course on it. So the foundation's in place, but it's exposed. That should be done. Parts of Fruit Street like that should be done. Union Street did that whole section of Union Street. That's just a skim coat patch. But just so you know, that's out there.
Ralph?
Oh, thank you.
Best name?
Ralph Greggs, Shady Way, Neverland Village Green.
But knows who.
Although my wife's probably called. So a couple of points. The first point is, you know, if I could push back on Diamond Street a little bit. I mean, it's just integral to North Street as well as Union Street. And so that's just kind of a point. The other, the other thing I'm getting at is, you know, I kind of look at these things as all emergencies and River Roads an emergency. You know, you know, I put in 800 bucks into my car in the last year. Year before that, about 400 bucks, you know, multiply that by all the people in town. I'd rather have less aggravation, save some time, have a pleasant ride, be a little more proud of Norfolk. If, if I took that 800 bucks, which I'm going to spend again next year probably, put it back into the roads and save myself the aggravation and so forth. So I guess, I guess what I would ask is, is, is there a way we could think big about all of these necessary projects? And I realize that these are emergency projects, but nonetheless, I mean, is there a way to kind of scratch together the necessary sums for River Road and so on and so forth? And not, I mean, I understand priorities when you're thinking small, but the question is if we think big, then all of a sudden, you know, Diamond Street's not even an issue. It's just, just yet another necessity. And then, and then it gets to another idea which is bigger yet, if you will. And it's probably beyond the scope of this meeting. But as long as I've lived in town, you know, what have I helped to build? The library, the senior center, the town hall, this school, that school, the next school. I mean, at some point, the roads are part of the capital infrastructure that may necessitate some big master plan and some decent execution. I just hear, you know, I'm a little appalled with some of the stories I heard about Noon Hill just a second ago. And it's like, you know, oh, I understand on the one hand, but on the other hand, it's like, you know, a job half done. It's just not done at all. So I guess I kind of wonder that. So that's that, so that's all I had to say. I did have a sort of a question that might not be the scope of this meeting, but if we have a moment or two, and that just has to do with the transfer station, specifically the paving of it. Would that be ever part of this or is that something on another topic? Oh, it's funded.
I don't know what you got there, but there is a.
Well, that's all I need to hear.
Out of the open.
All right, Bob, yeah, you got it. He sold, Bob, you closed the sales. We got that. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We got that funding last year.
I remember that because that was really bad too. I know what you're saying.
Bob does have a master plan on all the roads. I don't, I didn't bring it with me, but I know last year you had every single. Was the number four million?
No, it was up in the eight million.
I mean, it was, he had every single road identified what its needs were and, and I'm sure it's been updated on a regular basis, but it was a crazy number.
I appreciate it, but those, you know, tens of millions for King Philip and so on and so forth.
Oh, your point's well taken.
Yeah, so I mean, it's just something that, well, thank you.
Perhaps it is something that is the next need after we kind of pay down, you know, H Olive Day and if we haven't already, and so on and so forth. I didn't get a chance to take a look at, you know, our, our budget requirements for debt repayment and so forth. But, you know, things will, if you will, roll off and maybe this is one of those things that you roll up. I mean, I can remember someone saying about a project in town, it's our turn. And, and in this instance, it would be for the entire town.
I think that was the library, wasn't it?
Well, I'm going to let that one go. For building, for building Community Center on Village Green.
A little off the beaten path, but that's okay.
Well, the, your point's well taken, Ralph. I mean, last year, I think we put 200,000 on our free cash into roads. We don't have that. We're going to talk about budgets here a little bit. I, I don't know what's going on this year, but we learned, Todd can correct me here real quick and I know he will and he should if I give the wrong number. But, you know, every one of our surrounding towns seems to be in somewhat of a financial crisis this year. We heard that Rentham is using all of their free cash to fund their budget, which you think is 1.1 million, somewhere in that range. Plainville is using all their free cash. They have very little in their stabilization and they're still 900,000 short. North Attleboro, six and a half million dollar operational override just to maintain current services and staff. So it's a weird year. Our assessment at King Philip is the highest of all three towns this year. Last year, we had a reasonably decent ride. This year, we got killed because of this formula that the state uses that none of us in six actuaries can figure out. And we have to close a gap here tonight on the budget because we're, we've cut every budget and we're still potentially about 120 grand over. So I don't know what, what the, I mean, we're, we have to, we're going to do a balanced budget, one way or the other. We're not going to ask for a dime more than the town appropriates. And I don't know how you solve this. I mean, we. I mean, the only way you can really do that, I think, is through a dedicated stabilization fund that is specifically for roads and funded specifically to the stabilization fund. They can only be spent by town meeting for roads. And that's the only way you can assure that those dollars aren't directed to some other resource, is to do it through a stabilization fund. Because that requires, I think, a seven eighths vote or, is it a seven eighths? It's a seven eighths vote of town meeting to spend it. So, you know, you, you put the cuffs on, on anybody that wants to spend it someplace or you don't want it spent. Town meeting gets the only vote. That's a solution, but, you know, I don't know if the community would ever appropriate that. H Olive Day is off the books, by the way.
The road stabilization concept came up six years ago?
Yeah.
Maybe even a little longer. I.
Come around there.
Along with the sidewalk stabilization.
It improved in the town meeting, but then just.
It didn't get funded.
Didn't get funded at the, at the ballots.
Yeah.
But I think to Ralph's point, you know, we should look at that again and as, as debt comes off.
It's tough. Yeah, that would be tough. I mean, I think KP has eight years left, seven, eight years? Somewhere in that range? I think KP is about seven or eight years. They're on, you know, they're on the way out. L H Olive Day is off. Freeman Kennedy is still.
They just got on.
They're just warming up. We have police and fire coming on the books that. Library's off, I think.[1745.13] I think, if it isn't off, it's close to off. I didn't bring that debt sheet.
I did.
You did, okay.
Library gets off 2023.
It's close, five years.
Uh, may I make my question? We, not one much for going in the hole, however, you know, when we spoke on the phone, you were bragging on our credit rating, so that's always, that's always good news. What if we took it down a notch? So, so the point simply is that sometimes spending money today for the long run is worth the additional sums. And then maybe when some of these larger projects, I mean, let's face it, a lot of these projects have been funded, will have a long life, that won't require additional sums, and we can sort of do, you know, pick up sort of perhaps a little flexibility in the tax load so as to pay down these debts that we might otherwise incur. I'm not talking about wrecking the credit rating or anything like that.
Well, we're at double A plus, I believe.
That's what I'm, I understand, I understand. So you take it down-
We're tired to get there.
I understand that. But, I mean, you know, one of the advantages of double A plus is that when you have emergencies, and these roads, in my opinion, are an emergency and a necessary capital infrastructure. I'm tired of spending 1,000 bucks on my car for no good reason. I'd rather spend them on the roads, right? And I'd probably only have to spend a fraction of the boot. So all I'm getting at, and I'll just make up numbers, right? So 4 million would take us from double A plus to double A minus, just for argument's sake. You know, I think these, these credit ratings are, you know, a little bit on the abstract side, whereas the roads are real.
Well, they are meaningful to us in the sense that we refinance all the time.
I understand that.
You know, I mean, we're constantly looking at our debt and refinancing debt, and because of our credit ratings, we get very, very favorable rates, which over, it saves us money.
Well, yeah, but, you know, I guess I'm pushing back on the penny wise, pound foolish argument, not to imply that I understand which side of the fence is the right answer. I'm just asking, is it worth the examination, not making a case that in fact it is something to be done?
Okay, no, I mean, I think you've mentioned that before. I mean, I know we're getting at Ralph, because eventually it was going to cost more, you know, because, you know, we have the double A plus rating, it allows us to refinance and save, our basis point, which saves us $10,000, but the roads get worse and worse, that doesn't, it's not even going to matter, right? Because now we're going to, we're going to need $25 million, even if we had the triple A plus plus plus. The cost is there, so. I mean, I think, I know people, you know, ask me all the time, you know, we just keep borrowing money for this and this, I can't afford it. I mean, I think, you know, that we just keep adding debt, you know, a lot of it, like you said, the way we've bought, you know, we've done no general budget overrides, right, in the last 12 or so years, or as long as I can remember. These have a finite life to them, like a road's thing. I mean, I think that's, people might, like you said, sick of losing rims and tires and stuff like that.
It's a trade-off.
It is a trade-off. And, you know, at least me personally, I find, you know, and I know people get frustrated, it's hard sometimes to rally the troops until it's in their backyard or till they're replacing their rim or their tire, right? If they've been blessed to avoid any other normal wear and tear, not extraordinary wear and tear, you know, their appetite seems to sometimes not be as favorable as you would like, right? Or you think, you know, it's almost as if you could reach everyone pragmatically, it does make sense, right? Because the cost of everything is just going up over time. We either do it now, or, you know, continue the strategy of doing now, you know, which is, I wouldn't say throwing good money after bad, but it's, you know, doing the best we can with what people want us to spend, right?
Well, I mean, just a note to the chairman, we're going to be discussing the budget later, so maybe we can circle back, you know, after we understand the budget in its entirety as far as whether there is some opportunities to do something further. We're opposed here.
Wait, any more? Bob on the, kind of-
Back to that last conclusion, it'd be nice to have five years of a half a million dollars a year than it would be to get like 2 and 1/2 million dollars all at once. Because when you repair your roads altogether, you know, they fall apart altogether. So it's nice to have a program that just goes, it's not like 10 million is going to solve our problem. It would, but it'll be somebody else's problem later. You know what I mean? It just, you've got to keep it moving, you know? And you've got to get on streets before they get into that kind of deterioration.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting, I know, what a proper schedule of payments would be if you borrow money or how fast to borrow. And so obviously, you know, the need is greater than the financing. Financing would fit the need.
Sure.
I mean, just circling back to what Jim-
Camera, not off camera, but a side conversation. Do we have any other major-
Just circling back to the point that Jim had made, this might be such an unusual year that if you went and looked at, you know, a sectional type of approach, because, you know, there are some roads that aren't on the list, River Road, other roads, even Fruit Street. There's some sections of Fruit Street that absolutely have to get done. It's just a matter of how many feet, you know, we reconstruct. But I'm thinking that maybe the first approach should be to look at, like a triage type of thing, and then see, you know, how much will that cost? What is left in terms of, you know, more comprehensive roadwork? And then maybe circle back like an iterative process until we get to a plan that we think is really the optimal plan. It's, it's never straightforward, but this year it seems like it's particularly difficult to identify the priorities because, you know, as much as it's a safety issue not having the yellow blinking lights, I mean, these are safety issues for some of these roads where, you know, I'm crossing the yellow line too. I mean, I'm going around some of these things and, you know, it's become, you know, business as usual, I think, for people just trying to avoid. And that's perhaps more unsafe than not the yellow light on Boardman, more the yellow lights that are on the list, blinking lights.
Well, the blinking lights, we need to, if it's just one this year or maybe one next year, or-
May not be the best year to go after three of them, I guess.
Not, yeah, I'd put them there just so you could see it, but, but I know that, you know, the school's been waiting in line for three years for one, so-
Okay, right, yep.
If there was one that we could put in this year, it would be Boardman, you know?
2019. Look at the difference.
Right, it's almost three, over three, I thought.
400,000.
Yeah, a little under four, right? Yeah. So.
Another project we're going to start soon, hopefully, is Lake Street. So it's going to eat up a little time and-
So Jim-
Your points were taken a lot, I mean, I'm looking at the debt. We have two sources of debt. We have debt that we pay in our budget, like our credit card bill, and then we have debt that's excluded from the budget, which is the overrides and the buildings and things of that nature. And that debt is fixed and it continues on for whatever period of time. The included debt is reducing substantially over the next few years. I mean, it's worth looking at. Doesn't help us this year. But in future years, in future years, it does, because there's a lot coming off the books.
Yeah, my point was the game plan for a long run. I realize we've got emergency budget items, something like that.
Thanks. Yeah, that's worth taking a look at.
Jim, you were speaking with Jack, but-
Yeah, I apologize.
You made, you made a good point earlier that, you know, this is such an unusual year that maybe Bob, looking at the sectional approach, you know, doing smaller sections, but making sure that we deal with these issues that are really causing people to have to drive in the other lane, you know, to avoid damaging vehicles, what have you, that know for sure that we're going to deal with all of those. And if we can do more comprehensive, more lengthy sections on the other roads, then that's a good place to come back to if we can, but know that we're dealing with all these other priority issues. Because even, you know, Fruit Street, I'm sure it's Bob's intent, even though it's not on here, to deal with some of the more substantial issues, so fair enough. But, you know, there's sections of that that just have to be dealt with because, you know, people are just all over the road right now trying to avoid the issues that-
And Diamond's a short point. I mean, even though it's a sheer road, short road, it's a cut through for Norfolk residents. It's Norfolk folks that use that road. It's not Franklin or, and not that we should distinguish one way or the other.
I thought we should punish them. Yeah, I look at both.
We are on cable in Franklin, too.
No, that's all, we still have to care about our residents first and foremost.
We don't care, we don't care.
Our residents first, always.
We'll call Chef Nutty tomorrow and tell him we don't care. Is that, I know, I know you get a better deal if it's a longer project. I mean, it's logical, you know? But is there a way you could at least kind of take a look at that and see if we did, if we could do five major projects, if we could repair those five in a shorter scale or a lesser scale to allow us to do four more? And it may be that exponentially, because you're moving, you know, the contractors around, that the two bucks goes up to four bucks, you know? I don't know the answer to that, but-
You know, what might be a consideration is, because now you make, you're expanding the thought of, that sectional passion is, it's an actual program. In some towns, that's, that's just a program, because they don't have money to top streets. The city of Newton where I was, that was just what we did. But if you, if you're real serious about it and you want to get together with, like, and have a regional approach, maybe we could buy a paver, a driveway paver, not one of the big blonde oxes for, you know, 800,000, but, you know, something you pick up for $60,000, you share it with another town, you get them ready while they're paving, then you can hop over with the paver and you pave that out. It's, you know, it's a thought.
But isn't the problem with that, I mean, I remember we talked about that with the street sweeper. Remember that? And the problem is, is we all want to use a street sweeper on the same day.
Because there's always certain paving times.
Wouldn't it be a case where the paver, because you have a limited horizon of time, you can't do this in February and March, you know? Wouldn't we all want it at the same point in time?
Well, if that was the case, then we'd do it ourselves. But it requires employing people, you know, and it's tough. You get, you're close to developing another division almost, you know? This is what we're going to do. And there's the need in this town for it. So you weigh that out with just using the contract, because you're never going to get a price like $68 a ton in place.
Well, I know this is a corny phrase, but, you know, thinking outside the box, which is well worn out and well used, but it, I mean, we have, they're in such disrepair this year, it's the worst I've seen, that this may be the year where we just need to find creative ways and do things, we know it's not going to last 10 years, it's only going to last four or five. I think, to me, we need to do that. And this heating repaving system, if that works and it's cheaper-
I'll get right on that.
You should look at that and see if we can't find ways to do more, even if it isn't to the extent that we'd like. That's just my thought, because they're really bad.
Yep.
And we can't print the money, you know, so, just my thought.
There is something that happens with asphalt, and it doesn't, it's not the cure, but it, it makes you forget a little bit. But the heat of the summer just melts these streets down, and when we do our patching and stuff, they don't pop anymore. And you get a chance to forget about it for a while until this time next year. But, you know, there's good news ahead. It's not going to be like River Road all over town. In one month's time, there won't be any complaints. I promise it'll be gone. It happens for the last 20 years, but, but it's not the, it's not the solving of the problems.
Well, I think this is maybe something we spend more time on.
Yeah. I'm going to point Ralph, that's the chairman of the ad hoc.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. That's another, that's another committee for you.
Well, actually, when Ralph and I were talking, he volunteered to become more actively involved in helping work through this.
Two points. You would need a co-chair, because what I know about roads, what I know about roads is how far down into one I can go. That's it. But I can get you out of that hole on the finance side.
Well, you're not alone.
Same here, fortunately. But I'd be happy to participate in, you know, whatever you thought was necessary to kind of get to, you know, perhaps what might be the right answer.
Appreciate that.
Would it make sense to, I mean, do you want us, do we need to vote anything tonight? Because you've got to get to work.
No. I've got money from last year and jobs unfinished from last year. I need to get on Lake Street, and it's going to eat up a little time. But as we're doing that, we're going to be doing a lot of the section patch. We'd do it anyways, but it's going to happen this year.
Yeah.
So maybe we can have another crack at this in terms of the chapter 90?
Well, what I would do, and I was hoping, you know, to do is like, I gave you a first shot at what I thought might be a good idea to spend the money, which is here. We can, you know, take this and go from there. And what I like to do sometimes is, what I have been doing every year here, is break this in half and just do a phase. Do what I know that I can get done. Leave some money in the bank so we can see what it looks like in six months from now.
You've always done that, yeah.
Yeah. And then, you know, have a good late summer, fall paving. A second round of chapter 90 requests.
Yeah, so he'll come back with chapter 90 request when he's ready to actually work on one of these projects.
Okay. So we have time to rethink some alternatives?
Yeah, and we can talk too. I mean, you know, I guess you can't quorum and talk this out, but if you ever wanted to do a workshop or just-
Yeah, take you for a tour.
I've done drive-throughs with you.
Thinking, how does the price of oil affect the price of asphalt? I mean, what's the relationship there? Because that's-
Well, it's, you know, asphalt's oil, basically, you know, it's got a lot of oil in it, so it's, the markets are adjustable. So whatever the oil barrels are costing, and they factor that into the price of asphalt, there's an escalation. But it, I think oil's gone down, so I don't think, you know, 68 is going to stay put. Oh, is it?
Yeah, it's back on the rise.
Well, when are you, I mean, we're talking about three months ago, when they, when it finally gets here and they calculate it into the asphalt, so I can never figure that out.
I just didn't know in terms of your costs, whether or not, you know, they're still-
We have an escalator in there anyway, don't you?
Right, everybody does in this bit. But it's never a factor, it's, you know, you know, if I, if we do an $80,000 street, it could be 86,000, you know? I mean, six grand, but it's, or it could be cheaper.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks for that. Jack on that?
Thank you both. It's for being good input, thank you.
Appreciate it.
We've got more to talk about, and you can stay as long as you like. Yes, I know. I'm jealous, and I think they're down.
We're competing with the roads tonight, yep. Okay. We get the message.
What?
I think they're down.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can put the game on and just mute it if you want.
It gets conned.
You just get the score.
Okay, well, that was great.
Yeah, it's worthy of more conversation.
Do we want to, under the accent check, do we want to do the easement? Or do we want to have, well, so Todd, you want to just up the budget then? We don't keep them, we're just budgeting.
Yeah, yeah. Let's do the budget. Easement, easement is a one man thing, it's just a-
Todd, you want to join us up here for budget, so we don't keep you here all night?
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob. Really appreciate that.
Thank you, Bob.
I know it's not easy. Thank you.
I did see something, I know, you know, President Bush is in critical condition.
Oh, I knew that might be the case. Yeah.
She was in better condition than he was.
Yeah, they kept that very quiet, at least.
I'm going to say today, though. They should have said today, they should, when they've been together as long as they haven't married.
72 years, I think.
They should get to go together.
Yeah, I think we all had those thoughts.
You know, because-
Seeing him at the funeral was heartbreaking.
They're, they're two people that are one.
Okay, so Todd, walk us through it, what we got?
Sure. What you have in front of you is the proposed budget. There's two scenarios that I have in front of you. If you want to look at the first one where it says King Philip, 4% at the top.
Oh, that's, okay, yep.
Okay, so with King Philip assessment at a four percent increase from pre fiscal year eighteen, the budget would work out to a shortfall of about a hundred and twenty thousand, one twenty-four there at the bottom. And that is with the Norfolk School, their recommendation or the requested budget is three point six five percent.
But that's a reduction from their original request, which I think was four and a quarter?
Yep.
Yeah.
So they've reduced their budget to bring it in line so that we're, again, at a shortfall of about a hundred and twenty. The budget also includes three hundred thousand dollars of our free cash in order to get us to the negative one twenty. So in order to close that budget gap, probably need about another hundred and twenty thousand from the free cash, which would be about four hundred and twenty thousand of our six hundred and eighty thousand dollars of free cash.
And you think, I mean, you've gone through all of it, all this, Todd, I mean, nothing, I mean, on the budgets.
Some of the major items that I took out of the budget, we had our advisory reserve last year of seventy-five thousand, reduced that to fifty thousand, so it took out twenty-five thousand there. Closed one of my positions in my department, that gave us an extra thirty-two thousand. Facilities maintenance, we've reduced that overall budget by about seventy-eight thousand. Shifting some of the expenses out of the fire department, we've reduced that by about another eighty-four thousand. Council of Aging, reduced one of their positions by about eighteen thousand. Everything else is pretty tight. Expenses pretty much across the board are flat and/or reduced. The only increases are pretty much healthcare, three point five percent overall, and then the salaries.
Contractual type obligations, right?
So I squeezed it as best we could.
Have we looked at, you know, we, it's harder, riskier, not riskier, but tougher to forecast on the revenue side of them, maybe?
Revenues have increased, so didn't wanna go too aggressive, but new growth. Last year we had about five seventy-five, that came in at five-ten. So didn't wanna be too aggressive, but I know we have a bunch of properties coming online, hopefully. So we'll put that at six-twenty-five.
And you said last year the budget is the five-seventy-five, and it only came in at five-ten?
Correct. So I am pushing the envelope on that. We've adjusted some of the other ones, the local receipts up a little bit, wasn't too aggressive. The licenses and permits, which are, you know, the building permits and things of that sort, increased thirty thousand dollars year over year. Everything else is pretty much flat. And the one item, you know, that we get the prison mitigation monies in, but you can't really count on them because they're not guaranteed. But I don't really factor that into this equation. And then the cherry sheet items are currently what they're proposing, subject to change on final budgets at the state level.
And what was the other, so the other one, the King Philip, six point four.
Based on their assessment request, which really, prior to my working on this today, was at seven point two percent increase. They've decreased their overall budget by another two hundred thousand. So effectively, it works out to be about a six point four percent increase to us. So if we were to utilize King Philip at six point four, our school's at three point six five. The shortfall in total would be three hundred and thirteen thousand, two fifty-nine. And we just wouldn't have enough free cash to cover that.
Six point four represents their original budget projection minus some tweaking of revenues and more definitive numbers from the state and things of that nature. When I was there a week and a half ago or so, and they acknowledged that they had another two hundred thousand dollars that they could remove. That doesn't, that isn't a cut in a true sense. It's a retweaking, as it always is the case, as they get more refined numbers on special ed and things of that nature. Todd, sharing with me today that the six point four or the four percent is about a four hundred thousand dollar difference on their total budget, which is about a thirty-five million dollar budget. Thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-four and change, I think.
Three and change, yeah.
Yeah. So it's, it's roughly one percent reduction in their total operating budget.
So you had said at first something about three point six five, what was the three point six five?
That's for the Norfolk Schools.
That's the Norfolk Schools, okay.
It's supposed to be at the top right there, Jeff, I think. Right, it should, both sheets have the Norfolk Schools.
We also have to kind of think a little bit about Plainville campus. Plainville has been a good partner with us in KP over the last many years.
Yep.
And, well, Jeff, why don't you share what you learned today?
Yeah, I mean, they're still, they're, they're a little bit behind us, obviously, in the budget process, because they don't have town meeting until the beginning of June. But when they constructed their first draft of the budget and have done some work on it, they put KP in at three percent, which would be fairly equivalent to our four percent. Probably even, they'd have to still go up a little bit, probably to match our four percent. They had used all their free cash, I don't know what that number was, I think it was in the four to five hundred thousand dollar range, but it was all of it. And they still had a nine hundred thousand dollar deficit. So.
And they don't have nine hundred thousand in their stabilization funds?
No, they don't, they only have three hundred thousand, I think. So they're gonna have, they're gonna struggle. Rentham, on the other hand, well, it, you know, I guess out of the three of us, they're in the best shape budgetarily this year, because the formula for KP, when we're at seven percent, they're down at two something. So they've put KP in at their, at their request of two point seven percent or whatever that number was. They've used one point one million dollars of their free cash. My understanding is they do have four to five hundred thousand dollars that they'll use for capital. But they're still looking to make some cuts in some of the other departments, so.
So what do we need to decide, I mean, you know, like I said, I, I agree with Jim, you know, we have to bargain with our fellow towns as best we can. We have to try to do right, obviously, we have to do right by our schools as well, so.
Well, Rentham, I don't, I don't, I'm gonna say this harshly, but I don't mean it, but Rentham doesn't care what the number is. They, they hit the goldmine this year.
Right.
In terms, even though they have more students than we have, their assessment is substantially lower than ours, thanks to this convoluted formula that, that affodals all of us, but anyway. So they're, they're gonna vote whatever anybody votes, they're, they're okay. We have the issue this year that Rentham had last year. Rentham got hit last year. So, you know, in fairness, you know, it does seem to rotate around. But, you know, I mean, we, we can't, we can't put six hundred and some odd thousand dollars of free cash into this budget. We're, we're creating a hole next year that, that is too big. We have put four to five hundred thousand in the budget in past years. And, you know, with some degree of confidence that we're okay, and it's proven to be the case, that we've managed through that. But six, seven hundred thousand is just too much. So to me, it's, we have to reduce that and, and.
That's, that's, again, that's the four percent, we're okay with that, because it would just, you have to use an additional hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah, I mean, now we're using, we're using four hundred and twenty, four hundred and forty-five thousand of free cash, we've done that before.
Of course you didn't have anything, as we all know.
Bless you. We have the money, we have, don't have to touch stabilization. I, I certainly understand Ralph's comments, but I, I would be very reluctant to, you know, get our debt ratio out of line, that our credit rating went down and where we refinance almost every year, it seems like we, we are refinancing these debts, so.
Are we first again, as far as town meeting among the KP towns?
We're always first.
We're on May eighteenth and then they're on.
So that's gonna set the.
We're gonna set the number.
They're on June tenth.
Rentham will agree to whatever we vote.
And like I said, based on Todd and that feedback, you know, the four hundred thousand dollar total budget difference, one percent, I mean, you meet with KP more than obviously.
Well, to my knowledge, they, they have not made any cuts from their original request. They've made adjustments to their original request, as they fine-tune their numbers. But I could be wrong, we tried reaching superintendent and the finance director today, and none of us could get a return call. And maybe, I'm not saying that critically, but to my knowledge, they have not made any cuts to their requested budget. The, the adjustments have been to.
Right, so I mean, again, so if we, if we go to the four percent, they're gonna have to come up, you know, it's voted, it's agreed by two of us, they're gonna need to come up with about four hundred thousand dollars in cuts or.
Out of their total budget.
Okay.
Yep.
I mean, again, I don't wanna see them have to cut any, but they have a request, and then maybe, like you said, that we have to make hard decisions as well, what, you know, do you not, as long as I don't have to do, you know, if it doesn't impact, hopefully it doesn't impact teachers and stuff like that.
Well, I mean, this, this budget does not reflect any, a reduction in staff, actually, not, not an increase in staff, I mean, there's no, just.
Yeah, we're losing one person by attrition.
That we're not replacing.
Correct. Okay, do we need to, do we need to do anything now?
I don't think you need to form, it's up to you, I don't think you need to formally vote it, Todd and I'll, and whoever, if you want to be there on Wednesday, we're gonna present it to the advisory board on Wednesday night.
Yeah, and that'll give.
It'll be helpful to know that you supported it.
I'll physically go up to KP tomorrow and see if I can find somebody to talk about this.
Just let them know. Jeff, anything else on that?
Thank you, Todd.
No, it's just, it's unfortunate, the roads at the same time that the school getting hit this year, as hard as we get to hit. Timing is everything.
This look, my numbers maybe, is, this looks like about seventy percent of our new revenue is going to schools?
At the end of the day, yep.
Yep.
So we have about a, a little over a million dollars of new revenue. And that's going, pretty much going to KP and to the schools.
A little more than seventy percent.
Yeah, actually, more than, if you just add KP and the elementary school, well, that's, I'm sorry, that's the six point three percent. It's over eight hundred thousand, so it's eighty, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Todd.
Here's what it is.
So just a couple of other things, Todd's done an outstanding job. It's been nice for me having a little bit less to do with the, actually, a lot less to do with the budget than in prior years, but, so, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Todd.
But a couple of the key financial things to keep in mind, we are not, at this point, it doesn't look like we're gonna close the snow and ice budget in the spring, we're gonna wait to do that in the fall.
Which we've done before.
Which we've done before, and we're allowed to do that. But that means we'll only be eating up some of next year's free cash.
Right. Do we know what that deficit is?
Two hundred thousand.
About two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand. Oh, we've had worse.
Right, yeah. It was good until the end of January, we gotta, we gotta see if we can straighten out that February weather.
Seems to be, it seems to change this every year.
Now, the prison mitigation will be certified in October, yep, September, probably.
Yeah, Todd's been, Todd's been moving that date forward, so it's September, I think, these days.
Oh, gonna get early this year.
Probably.
I don't think we've ever had it on September. Wow.
That's awesome. Finance director.
Outstanding job.
Still what I do.
He's probably the most experienced finance director we've had at this point now, but longest-serving tenure, so congratulations.
Has he passed you?
I was only the finance director for a year, so.
Thank God.
Year and a half, so. But I'm glad you think it was more than that, that was kind of words.
Do you have others on the budget check finances you mentioned?
No, I think, you know, we've talked, we talked about a little bit a couple of weeks ago, the, the regional dispatch, you know, we funded it where we think we're gonna end up. It's possible we may need to supplement that budget some in the fall, but I'm pushing back on the other, and I've got some comrades from the other towns, so pushing back on them to keep that assessment low, since we're only doing a half year. You know, we'll only be live for at most a half a year, and, and we'll see if it, you know, I'm thinking it may be a little bit shorter than that, so we're gonna try and push back and lower that assessment. So we'll keep an eye on that. That may either free up some money or we may need to make an adjustment in the fall. Anything else financially you wanna, we've got about ninety thousand, ninety to ninety-five thousand dollars of transfers that.
From the free cash.
From, for this year, that facilities budget.
That would still leave us about a hundred and fifty thousand of free cash.
Yeah, so we've got some facilities costs, building, unfortunately, gotten more to be a traditional thing the last couple of years, some, some inspections, which is good news, drives up our new growth, but we've had a lot of inspections. So the contractor fees, you know, we pay on a per diem basis, have gone up. And then the fire department had kind of a longer-term injury. And then these, these last few storms really kinda drew up their, drove up their overtime budget. Adding those all up, we're, we're somewhere in the ninety thousand dollar range, which Todd will cover in the transfers.
Perfect.
All right.
Thank you, thanks, Todd.
Thanks again, Todd.
Thank you, Todd.
As I said, he's done an outstanding job.
I'd rate him.
But I predict his.
You did, you did.
Well, I'm gonna predict that it's, it's gonna go down a little bit as we get closer to a contract here, I think he's gonna struggle a little.
So did we cover then the KP budget that we kind of touched on?
If we have, yeah.
I think we have, yeah.
Enrollment projections in Norfolk Schools, Jeff?
Well, we talked, it's in your packet, we talked about that some, a week or so ago. You know, there's a lot of data in there, I think, you know, I think we might wanna invite, if, if you have specific questions about it, I think you might, we might wanna have Dr. Lardy come in at some point in the future. You know, we've had some conversations that we've talked about, about, you know, they have some space needs, and this is some data they put to, they hired out to have put together that talks about projections. You know, and there are, certainly is some concern that there will be some growth. It does show you that we, we've lost some population in the, in the school ranks over the past decade or so. But there are still some challenges at, at certain spots within the, the elementary school that they'll need to try and find some space for in the future, so.
I haven't had a chance to read it, so, okay.
Yeah, I think it'd be, you know, I think it'd be helpful to have her come in and, and I don't wanna put any words in her mouth or. Jim gave us an update, I think, a week or so ago, about the KP teachers negotiations and those.
We did that, we knew, okay, so we covered that.
Good. And then the action item?
Okay, yeah, so what's the easement?
So this is for development on Medway Street that is going in, it's built nursery down there. And really, all it is, is the planning board has agreed to let them end of sidewalk a little bit around some trees, and so they went out and got an easement from the neighbor where the sidewalk would go. And they're just asking you to, to, you know, to sign off on the easement. That, my planning board and the planner have recommended that you, you accept that easement.
Do I have a motion to accept that easement?
Just the question, who, from a legal standpoint, viewed that?
Dave, Dave's a lawyer.
Dave, Dave, okay. So moved.
Second.
Any other further questions? So Dave's the hearing done, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need to sign something to, right, for the pass that around, thank you.
Just one?
Just one.
Do you wanna do the warrant check?
Yeah, if you do the warrants, will I, oh, yeah, bill warrants?
Oh, you have warrant under discussion, is this, you gave us copy, I don't know if there was anything.
No, we just wanted to include that in your packet in case there was anything you wanted to talk about. I mean, I think that process has been going well with the advisory board. I've been to a couple of the meetings, Sue's obviously been to all of them, actually, she's been to most of them as well. She took her birthday off, I think.
Oh, I took the week before.
So that has been going well, we did have some good debate last week. Rich was, Rich McCarthy was there, talking about the planning board articles, and there was some, they pushed back on some a little bit. One was the affordable housing. So I think Rich was gonna talk to the planning board tomorrow night about adjusting that language a little bit.
That was being allowed him to like move it not in the, in the development rights, it just.
No.
It was the payment part, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was, it was, it was the delivery of the affordable house. And then, and then allowing them to have a cash option. Instead of, you know, so they could, they could negotiate with the special permitting granting authority, which is the planning board, to pay to the municipal housing trust a sum that would equal, that they, they agreed upon, that was equal to producing an affordable house. So they were, you know, they pushed back on that, rightfully so, you know, they, they, one of the comments was that they didn't wanna, you know, that we don't wanna create affordable housing in pockets.
Right, we've always talked about that.
Yeah, we wanna, we wanna spread them evenly, and so that was a concern, and, and, you know, we, we, the dialogue, the debate went back and forth, and, you know, we talked about, yeah, it's not the preferred, certainly is to let, wouldn't be to let a developer out of a, creating an affordable house within the, his or her development, but, but in circumstances, it might make sense, so it would be good to have that ability. And it would always be up to the planning board whether or not to allow that at the end of the day, and they would do it in consultation with the municipal housing trust to figure out if they had the ability to take that on and whether or not, you know, so, bottom line is if the municipal housing trust and the planning board thought it was a good idea, then they would allow the developer to do that, provided they could come to a number that was agreement. The other part that we, so there was language about that ability to be able to take the cash option that, that the advisory board was struggling with a little bit, and that's what Rich is gonna look at. The other part that was being changed, that they were okay with, was the delivery of the affordable house. So the language right now is a little ambiguous about.
Right.
So if they have ten houses, ten-lot subdivision, when that one affordable house has to be delivered is not defined very well in our current language, and Rich made some improvements on that. It brought up a conversation about whether or not affordable components should be limited to ten percent. They were saying, you know, that, that basically just keeps us at level. And in fact, because of rounding, if you have, you know, eleven to nineteen-house subdivision, we actually lose space. And, and so, A, we said, well, that's not the, the proposal that's being changed, so we can't, you know, that's what, outside, so for this warrant. But it's also, you know, just debating that point, though, it's, it's, that's kind of the, I wanna say, that's the common, you know, that's the accepted inclusionary bylaw that, that says it's gonna be ten percent without rounding. that's the accepted inclusionary bylaw that says it's going to be 10% without rounding. And if we go up to 15 or 20%, then it may drive developers even more quickly to go towards a 40B option. So the fact that we're not at the 10%, we, you know, we don't want to be driving them towards 40Bs. We want them, we want them to build traditional subdivisions. You know, maybe we get to the point where we get up to the 10%, we would, we would up our inclusionary bylaw to be...
I mean, if you even go to 12, I don't know if you have to go even, just...
Yeah, 12, 15%.
There was a good point they raised, that we just, it's a catch-up. Like you said, it just outgrows itself.
Right.
But I, I think, at least being a person, I agree with that, it's risk now. I like the idea, think of, I always, you know, 10%, whether you do 12, 15, 17, 20%.
No, but I, but, you know, I think the, they're, you know, the developers, again, you know, they're, developers are going to argue their financial case and the pushback always is that, you know, even that one makes it very difficult. So that's why we're seeing nine-lot subdivisions. You know, so...
Never saw the 10, 10-lot.
Right, we've, we've got one now. It's, it's the first one in a long time.
10 lots of?
10 lots. No, he's like 16.
I thought it was more than 10, yeah.
He's up to, he's up like 16, so.
Plus Jack brought up, when you, if you went to 20%.
Why not just go to 25 and...
To maybe go to 25.
And avoid all zoning, local zoning.
Right, okay.
That's the real fear, is that just, we don't want to push anybody towards 40Bs until we can fend off 40Bs.
Permanently.
Permanently. Which hopefully we'll get to. I mean, we've had, you know, they're still, we're still working down that path. So that was, and then we did talk about the two petition articles. We talked about one of the petition articles. We talked about the one that would require the four of us to look at going back to 40 hours. There were a number of employees that attended that meeting, attended the meeting along with them. It was probably 10 or so in the audience, maybe a little bit more. And they asked if they could speak and the advisory board let them speak. And then they, they spoke about, you know, Friday jobs, about, about the appeal of, some of them had come over here the last few years to work for Norfolk and working a four-day schedule was important. I talked about, you know, the different schedules that we went through in the kind of five-year period when we transitioned. And the fact that, you know, if we, if we did go to a, let's just, I don't know what the petitioner was looking for, but a five-day schedule, I would assume, would be like an eight to four, five-day-a-week schedule. Well, then we would lose the four to six o'clock period every Monday through Thursday that residents that like. And that's really why we went to the four-day schedule, was to give some people some options at the, especially at the end of the day. You know, it was termed as the people coming off the train, but I think it's for a lot of people as they get off work. Still gives them the ability to get over here, you know, about 5:00 to do some business. So I talked about the fact that we'd have to, you know, clearly it would have to be a give-up if we went to a five-day schedule. So they voted to IP the article. Thank you. So that brings me to another kind of continuation of that, which is the resident communication review. And so there was, you know, nothing crazy, I wouldn't say, but there were some concerns raised on last Thursday when, so Wednesday night, we had the advisory board meeting. As I said, there was a number of employees here. Thursday morning, there were some phone calls made to town hall from a resident and, and, you know, kind of checking up on people, again, nothing that I would label harassing, but, you know, just challenging the fact that, you know, leaving messages about why they weren't there at 8:00, why weren't they picking up the phone at 8:00. You know, some, just, just people felt like they were being watched. And so I just wanted to make a kind of a statement. I started to print out some emails. I have some with me that we could talk about or not talk about, but, so I'll read my statement and then we can go from there, if you want. "So for many years, we've received emails from Mr. Chipman on a wide variety of topics, ranging from questions, complaints, and insults. I have had enough. My tolerance level has hit an end. Today, some town hall employees approached me with concerns about Mr. Chipman's actions. He left voicemails and spoke to an employee last Thursday about an issue that had discussed at the advisory board meeting. Recent emails talk about norpocracy, his version of local hypocrisy, combining Norfolk and hypocrisy. This one actually has a level of humor that could be appreciated. But for years, he has railed upon the mismanagement of the town and our crippling tax rate. Yet he doesn't have to seem to have any suggestions for improvements other than to fire everyone. Budget comparisons he has provided to other towns such as Chatham actually show us in a good light. Years ago, Mr. Chipman responded to an RFP for insurance coverage for the town. His proposal was a day late, but we accepted it. His proposal was not chosen, so his response to this contact with selectmen, that he had heard that I, that I, had relatives working for our current insurance provider. This was untrue, and when Mr. Chipman was challenged on that point, he said he was only repeating what he had heard. In an email to town officials, Mr. Chipman made derogatory comments about a town official's religious beliefs. Recently, he referred to one of the selectmen, myself, as a liar. He has made negative comments about town meeting attendees and written of the rubber stamping of the advisory committee. Mr. Chipman begs for information to be made available to the public. I am happy to publish his emails from here on out, so people know how disrespectful he treats those of us that work or volunteer for the town." So those are just a couple of examples. I literally have hundreds of emails from him. And, you know, they end in sarcastic remarks. I know you all have received emails from him. We're public officials, we, you know, we have, I probably have a very thick skin. You can see it, you can see even though, you know, I put up with this and I, and I'm paid well, so I, you know, I deal with it. It's one of the burdens I bear, I guess, for having this title. But, you know, it's, it's still a small town and I don't like, you know, I know we've had conversations many, many years about, you know, when somebody attacks your personal integrity, it really hits the bone. And I think when he sent Scott an email last week referring, I think he said, "You were a liar, just like Hathaway."
Correct.
And that's, so I just, I wanted to get it out in the public, just so people know what we put up with. 99.9, 9% of the people that we deal with are wonderful. You know, the folks that came today to talk about the roads, very professional, very polite, offered solutions.
They want to be part of the solution.
I think it should be, yeah, I know it's always hard, not always easy to do, but it should be constructive. Like you said, we can agree to disagree, we can debate on an issue, and again, not agree. We deal with this every day, where, especially neighbor against neighbor, right? Just sometimes it just can't be, you know, have to agree to disagree and hopefully treat each other with respect. That's really all I ask. I mean, I volunteer like anyone else, so, you know, yeah. I'll say one then.
I mean, and I shared with Jim an email, I guess a note that Jack McFeely had written in 2003. And it talked, it was a note that he wrote to the other selectman and left it in the file that, that talked about, you know, Mr. Chipman's actions and the fact that, you know, the board didn't respond to him quickly enough, yet he had gone for several years without taking any action. And all of a sudden, he, you know, when he says, you know, "Now I need an answer," he gets, he goes hostile when, when there's not immediate action. And then, you know, Mr. McFeely's note also talked about Mr. Chipman going around the board and trying to alter a deal that, despite the fact that they'd already come to an agreement in terms. So it just kind of, when I read that, I just, I just said, "Well, that sounds very similar to the way he acts today." Doesn't surprise me that he hasn't changed in 15 years, but... So, you know, I know other boards have read his notes publicly and I just, you know, I, I just don't think in a small town like this, we should have to deal with, you know, being insulted. I'm not always right, I don't always have the best answer. I welcome other people to come in, come in with suggestions and point out something if I make a mistake, but, you know, you don't have to call me names or, you know, insult people that work in the town hall either.
I think as a public servant, the problem comes to play where people feel it's incumbent on them to try to respond in a, you know, in a productive way, in a way to try to address a problem or something like that, because certainly that's our jobs to do that. But if the tone of it is so off-base, you know, human nature, you know, suggests that you almost don't want to respond to it, but then it's a potential dereliction in duty. So it's a, it's a difficult situation to find oneself, in my opinion.
Absolutely. I mean, we talked, we, you know, he likes to use the public records requests, which is his right, you know, but it's, it's, you know, when the public records, now that we have the new open meeting laws, we have...
We have new...
We have a public records officer that works in the clerk's office. And so he's started tracking, and since he's been tracking, Mr. Chipman's had over 20 public records requests and there haven't been any others from anybody else. So it's, you know, that goes, and that's just kind of the tip of the iceberg, you know. Again, it's his right to have public records requests, but, you know, there's just the, it's the, what I would, you know, just the harsh emails about, with an insult thrown into asking a question, it's just, it gets, it gets tiring after a while.
I mean, I think that's the crux of it. It's, again, you have every right to request, you have every right to challenge, and, you know, to debate and say, you know, we're not doing that job well enough, or good enough, but it doesn't have to be, again, it doesn't have to be all sugary and nice either, but it should be to the salient points as best you can articulate it. And that's, you know, again, that's, that's the easiest way to do it, but people will always do that.
That's my, that's my commentary for today.
Appreciate that.
I think that, I think your point is that these correspondents now should be part of the public record.
Absolutely.
Unfortunately.
Okay, what other business we have? Action items, the... I think it's, is Jeff away, the reorganization of the board?
I put that on there, well, I know it sounds like Jeff may be traveling some in May.
Yeah, yeah.
So what a lot of other towns do is they reorganize the last meeting before they have the elections. Doesn't, because you can reorganize anytime. You know, you can reorganize five times a year if you want.
Every week, every meeting, I think. I mean, no, you could technically if you want, I think.
So, you know...
As long as it's on the agenda.
Yeah, the thought was that just, A, so that, you know, we don't have to be posted for election night. We can go and enjoy, you know, the camaraderie of the election and, you know, and not really, not bother having a formal meeting. You know, I think kind of doing the swear, doing it, you know, haphazard in the election polls is kind of, I think it's, I think it's, makes more sense to do it formally here and...
People can watch it, yeah. I'm fine with it. It makes sense. I mean, again, because it can always be changed at the board's pleasure, so, at next board, at next member's pleasure, if there's another, yeah.
And there were, I think, there was a little, you know, Jeff has been traveling a lot and just concerned that, hopefully he wouldn't be away for the election night, but we knew he was going to be here tonight, so that was part of the thought process as well.
Okay.
And I had mentioned to you gentlemen that unfortunately I'll be missing town meeting. I haven't missed one in quite some time, but it's not going to be in the area, unfortunately.
You're in good hands.
Is that agreeable with you?
Yeah, it makes, it makes sense. I didn't think I...
I think it would be good to make it a practice.
Yeah.
Make this a common practice for the...
Yeah, agree. Okay, and I will then put a forward nomination to Mr. Jim Leehan to be chairman.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will put a nomination forward to have Mr. Palumbo vice chair.
Second. All is in favor?
Aye. You can hang in there.
No, Mr. Pal, because it was Mr. Palumbo.
I will put a nomination forward to have Mr. Bugbee as clerk.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
We are reorganized.
Contingent on his reelection.
Yeah, obviously, yep. I can reorganize again.
Clerk for now.
Yeah, we'd have to reorganize, yes.
That we would have to redo.
We'd have to reorganize again. Any other unanticipated business or...
Well, we have an executive session.
Right, no, before I get to that, that's why I was just going to see if, because we're not going to, are we coming back out?
I'm not.
I'm not taking... Any other things, gentlemen? Before we do that too, I want to just thank you both. Obviously, the election is coming up, May 1st, so I've had a pleasure to serve this time for six years. Would love to serve for three more, but that's at the board's pleasure. So I want to thank you guys. You guys have been professional, hardworking. Again, I know it's not an easy job, right? So thank you very much for putting up with me.
Appreciate all your efforts, Scott.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, I would encourage people to attend candidate's night tomorrow night.
Yes, 7:00.
It's the selectmen's race, there's, the local schools has a race.
I think that's it.
I think those are the two contested races, yeah. It's at King Philip Middle School, 7:00. With that, we're going to now go into executive session. I don't have my verbiage, which I should have it memorized.
If I could propose to, we can adjourn to executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, including Chief Stone and Deputy Chief Carroll.
Okay, yep.
No votes will be taken and we will not return to open session.
I would like to propose that we enter into the executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, Chief Stone and Deputy Chief Carroll. There will be no votes taken and we will not be returning to open session. Roll call votes, Scott Bugbee, aye.
Jim Leehan, aye.
Jeff Palumbo, aye.
Good evening, folks, and I look forward to seeing you at candidate's night tomorrow night. Thank you.